I call to order the Adrian City Commission meeting for October 20th, 2025. If everyone would please rise for a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance. Roll call, please. Mayor Heath, present. Commissioner Roberts. Present. Commissioner Schwartz.
Present.
Commissioner Banky.
Present.
Commissioner Miller.
Present.
Commissioner Castleberry. Commissioner Gauss.
Present.
All Commissioner members present with the exception of Commissioner Castleberry. May I get a motion to excuse Commissioner Castleberry?
So moved.
Support.
We have a motion from Commissioner Gauss and Commissioner Schwartz with a second from Commissioner Miller. Roll call, please. Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Yes.
Commissioner Banky.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath. Yes. Motion carried. May I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Support.
We have a motion from Commissioner Banky with a second from Commissioner Gauss. Roll call, please. Commissioner Schwartz.
Yes.
Commissioner Banky.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath. Yes. Commissioner Roberts. Yes. Motion carried. At this time, it is public comment regarding items on the agenda. Just to reiterate, there is a three-minute time limit, and for the record, please state your name and place of residence. We will begin inside the chambers first. When we have exhausted all comment regarding items on the agenda, we will then open it up to the Zoom participants. We will begin now. Hearing no comment inside the chambers, we will now open it up to the Zoom participants regarding items on the agenda. Hearing no public comment, we will now move on to informational discussion topics, and I will turn it over to our city administrator Chad Baugh.
All right, thank you. If you would, please, I'd like to introduce our chief of the police department. Apologize to get the mic closer to me, but Vince is gonna inform us of traffic enforcement and a new vehicle that he'd like to propose to the city, including some of the background that leads us here today.
All right. Thank you, sir. Good evening, Vince Emmerich, Chief of Police for the City of Adrian. If you're like me, it seems like people are driving a little crazier these days. We've had a lot of serious accidents lately, and I've been getting increased complaints. We've been charting where those locations are and doing a little data research to see if the numbers are such. So I've put together a small presentation of the nature of our issue, what we're seeing out there, and what the statistics are, and then what we're gonna be doing about it. So the Office of Highway Safety Planning put out a press release, and in that press release, it said Michigan's overall crash fatalities rose slightly, but vulnerable roadway users saw steep increases in crashes and fatalities. So just on the surface, that seems to follow what we're seeing here. We've had a lot of very serious accidents with pedestrians, with bicyclists lately. And what the OHSP is saying is, yes, there's an increase, but more of a shift towards those vulnerable travelers, those pedestrians on the roadway. They noted that teen fatalities are up 17%, and that distracted driving fatalities is up 10%. So those are some very concerning statistics. Fatal crashes statewide over the years, not that much of a change. Obviously, just up a few from last year, which was down the year before that in 2022. On the next slide, you will see by location, and that orange portion, that is the city and county roads. So the largest portion of crashes are coming on the local streets. For the county, in 2024, they had about 2,500 total crashes, 644 injuries, and 23 fatalities. And in the city, and this is a little more than a year, this is about a year and a half, we had 845 total crashes, most with no injuries. We had some minor injuries, 10 serious, and three fatalities. And that photo there, that's from a few years ago, but that was a drunk driver that took off on down the Quonah Trail and thought the footbridge was a continuation of the road he was on. So we caught that for three minutes. What side of the statistics? What side of the statistics in my mind? That's what I'm trying to think. Especially just come up with just off the top. Just to have a 10 say. Just to have a 10 say. The hit-and-run crash where we had been looking for the driver for almost a year and recently made the arrest. Child on Albert Street getting off the bus that almost got run over. We just had the fatality on North Main Street near the bridge with the pedestrian. We had another cyclist. This one was a couple of years ago. This was under the overpass on Beecher, if you remember that. Person that was struck from behind. The young man crossing at Main and Beecher by the Wendy's there, and the woman who was run over in the Lowe's parking lot. So not a city street, but still traffic-related. So you don't have to think too hard to think of some pretty tragic things that have happened in the city. So statistically, our top five crash locations. Main and Beecher has been our number one for a few years now. Main and Metcalf, we had a tie for third place. Sand Creek in 223 and Winter and Beecher. And here, just this last weekend, we had a pedestrian struck at Main and Beecher. Thankfully, it was minor injuries only, but it could have been a lot worse. So what I would say when we're talking about locations is that our number one for a while used to be Main and Sienna, and then the traffic control was changed and it completely dropped off the charts. So efforts do work. You know, if you can find a solution, they do work, and it reduces crashes in that area.
Can you refresh my brain where Main and Metcalf are?
Main and Metcalf is Friendly Village.
Thank you.
Stuff Main. Yep. Yep. So in looking at our response, obviously, activity is up, serious crashes are up. Trying to find, you know, is it a police response perspective? Are we too busy to get out there and do traffic enforcement? So the next two slides are our stats. So this is our main workload, the calls for service. And you can see where it drops off for COVID in 2020, and then the steady increase since then. But by and large, we're still down from where we were in, say, 2015 in that range. We were up around 20,000 calls a year. And so right now, we're hovering around, and I don't have, I can't read that tiny print, but I think we're around 15,000. So on the next slide, this is our response to it. So these are the citations that are written. And, you know, officers use a lot of discretion. I would say we probably write a citation for every three traffic stops made. So this is by no means every enforcement action taken, but just as a metric to use, the number of tickets that we've written. You can see in COVID year, we said, do not have any extra contact with people. Don't be stopping people unless it's an absolute emergency, unless it's a crash where you need to issue a ticket. So you can see, we dropped well low in that year to the tune of about 300 tickets. And, you know, my question, because I'd never actually looked to see where we bounced back. And we did, we bounced back almost in the following two years. We were right back to where we were. So our level of enforcement is about the same as it's always been, but the activity persists. So what we're doing currently in between our calls for service has not been enough to impact the behavior of the drivers on the road. So what we're gonna be doing is reinstituting our traffic unit. And my predecessor, Terry Collins, had a traffic unit. It's a dedicated police vehicle for traffic enforcement. It's built a little differently. It's got a lower profile, so it's harder to tell that it's a police car coming at you until you've already passed them. So we are going to be deploying a vehicle like that on all shifts, along with our normal contingent of officers. So what we're already doing is gonna stay in play, and then to that, we're gonna add a car whose sole purpose is visiting those locations where we have the data, going to where the citizen complaints are being generated. Those two things, they don't necessarily align, but that does not make them any less significant. You know, we get regular complaints in areas like McKenzie Street or South Center Street, and very specific times of day, Dean Street, very specific vehicles. So we will deploy equally where the numbers are and where we get those complaints, and we'll try to address those specifically there. So that vehicle, while it's out there, it's not going to be subjected to the calls for service, the radio runs. So those will go to our regular platoon of officers. Now, granted, if there's something serious that kicks off, they can be a backup unit. But this vehicle's gonna be built differently. It's not going to have the divider in the back. We're gonna be using a sedan, so it won't have the full build-out that we have in our regular police vehicles. So if, you know, when they do encounter a drunk driver, when they do encounter a warrant arrest, you know, someone from the shift's gonna pick that person up and do that transport and drop him off. So they will be free to completely apply themselves to those causes. So the cost of this change, there is none. We have the room in our budget to make these moves. We're gonna lease a vehicle so that if we do this for a year, we do this for two years, it's not having the desired outcome, then we're not locked in. We can return that vehicle at no penalty. The outfit cost is minimal, so we will be putting in the MDTs, we'll be putting in the ticket printers. The light bars will be different because they will be inside. So you'll have a row of lights on the inside windshield, same for the back window. You'll have some in the door and under the vehicle so that from 360 degrees, it is visible as a police car. The striping will be the same. We'll still have the municipal black and white with Adrian Police on the door. The outfit, I believe, is gonna come in underneath what we need to bid out. So it'll even be less than 10,000 because of what we're doing to this car. I was also approached about a partnership with the Michigan State Police. They are very interested in helping us with this endeavor. I mean, if you're paying attention to what's happening with the state police, the posts and the number of officers and their budget, the amount of assistance they can provide has been reduced. So they are interested in chipping in on some of the equipment that goes into this vehicle. So there will be a partnership and a savings to us on that if we make that happen. And then, of course, we will be satisfying a capital need outside of the regular cycle, so I won't be coming to you asking for vehicles, you know, in this next couple of months when we start that up. So this vehicle, we put in, it'll keep the mileage off of the others and prolong the lifespan of those other vehicles that we have purchased outright. Yeah, it's also gonna serve as a trial. I mean, most of you commissioners remember when Enterprise was trying to sell us on replacing our entire fleet as a lease. So I view this as kind of a toe in the water to see if that works out, as they say. We would have the option to continue leasing until we paid enough that we own the vehicle, and then the resale falls in line with what we have spent on every other vehicle that we have. So there's really no requirement to keep it. If we decide it's not working the way we think, we can send it back. Any questions?
Yeah, Chief, I have a question. I know from time to time, or probably every day, there's the radar with the flashing your speed. You know, here's the speed limit, and here's how fast you're going, and you put that around the city at different places at different times. If somebody blows down going on a 25 or 30 mile an hour street, and they blow through at 60, are you filming those? Are you seeing those cars? And if so, in a situation like that, is there any follow-up?
So we purchased a radar sign several years back, and it's outfitted with a camera. The camera is set to activate in certain circumstances. You know, if someone were to throw a rock against it or something, if it felt a jarring motion, then it would take a picture. You know, you could set those parameters. What we found was that the camera was pretty low quality. We did have that. We had someone who tried to smash it off of the pole we had it mounted on, and it was essentially just a shadowy figure you couldn't make out. Now, the vehicles, you can make out year, make, model, color. You can get a lot more information on a car going down the road, but it wasn't good enough to capture the plates. So we could have a general idea, but not enough to follow through with enforcement. We could, so what we wound up doing was saying, okay, here's a vehicle about this time every day. They're doing the same thing, and then we would send an actual officer out to wait for that car and catch them that way. So we did do that. The trouble we had with the sign was that, you know, where there was a complaint in a certain area, so we would put the sign up, people were almost using it as a challenge to see how fast they could get it to read out. So what we did was have it go blank after a certain setting. So if the speed limit's 25, and the person gets above 50, I would have the sign go blank because they would race up to see how much it would go. And those, you know, it would be nice if you could predict when that was gonna happen and be there for it, but that wasn't the case. So we still use it, and we put it out there, but it's kind of a double-edged sword when we use that item.
And is it correct that you can't enforce based on camera footage for speed anyways, correct?
That's dependent. That'd be a question for our city attorney, I think. But yeah, no, we, certain things we can try to investigate an issue on, and some things we can't. So having us there is always the best, having us be the witness. But we can take a complaint and try to investigate it too if it's something serious.
If I recall, when the roundabout first went in, you had a couple of people out there doing donuts and speeding around the roundabout, and you were able to track them down, and at least, at the very least, have a discussion.
Well, they helped us out by posting their video on Facebook, so made life a lot easier.
Yeah. Well, you can't fit stupid, right?
The state police, so in addition to the infrastructure, are they still providing grants to pay for overtime or to pay for officers to help with enforcement during holidays or special events, those sort of things?
I'm trying to think of the last solicitation I got for that. It was more of a voluntary event, like here's some free signage, here's some, a press release that you can put your name on. And if you're gonna partner with us, then just let us know, you know, what times you'll have the officers out. But there was no monetary payback for the last one that I received. Yeah.
Vince, so one of the concerns citizens have expressed to me is especially at school time and by the elementary schools, and then also the VOTech area, that there's a tremendous amount of people speeding, not following the sign that says, slow down during the time when the lights flashing, you know? So I think those could be some, and I'm not trying to tell you how to do your job by end.
No, not at all.
But I think they would benefit the safety of our kids. And there's just certain times, you know, pickup, drop-off when they're coming through. So, but people have really expressed, especially out by VOTech.
No, I appreciate that. I know you folks get as many complaints, if not more, than I do. So if you have those, if you just forward them on to me, then we can add them to the list of locations that we're putting together to spend time.
Well, to Commissioner Schwartz's point too, my wife had to take me to Ann Arbor this morning for a doctor's appointment, and we headed out of town about 10 o'clock, and you did have one of your SUVs out there on North Main between Plainway and McDonald's off the side, and just waiting for people to come around that curve speeding. So it was a good thing to see.
So I'm sure you've done the research, but I just have to ask. So it's 24/7 these will be on, correct?
Yes. We, you know, depending on what's happening on night shift, if that officer then accumulates enough reports and traffics off the road, you know, around 4:00 a.m., then maybe we'll let him come in and write something like that. But yeah, for the most part, we intend to field it all the time. Now, inclement weather might be an issue. We might stop. If it's a snowstorm, we might take the car off the road because this is gonna be a rear-wheel-driven vehicle. So we may not be using it then, but.
I was just wondering, so we have, we get the reports of saying where the traffic crashes are, and I'm sure you get the reports on when speeding is. Is there a lot of speeding or traffic crashes, like between 2:00 a.m. and 5:00 a.m.? And I'm obviously not out and about at that time of the day. So is the car going to be useful, needed at that time?
Well, I would say, you know, I could get statistics for you, but I would say from my own experience, you know, when the bars close at 2:00, you wanna be out there until at least 3:00 because the percentage of drunks on the road increases as the night wears on. So the likelihood that you'll run into someone under the influence is higher. Around 4:00, it's pretty dead. You know, all of the lights have switched to flashing, and there's not much traffic out there. So if we have our regular contingent working and two people are out, and that person, you know, they're gonna rotate through on the shift and say, okay, listen, I need to catch up on this, or I had this report. They'll communicate on who comes on and who stays out.
Okay. You also commented that it's not going to, essentially from the outside, look like a traditional police car. Is that correct?
So it will look very much like a police car. You're familiar with our black and white scheme, the municipal scheme with the police on the side. It's gonna look exactly like that. It's a sedan, it's a two-door Mustang, so the doors will be white, and it will say police on the side, but it won't have the cage in the back. The lights will be inside. So if you're looking straight at it, you're gonna see a car coming at you. If you look at it from the side, it's gonna look like any other police car that we have.
If it's coming up behind you, well, and something as a female, I've always been taught, you know, I tell my daughters, don't stop if you're not sure it's a police car.
Right.
Go to a, you know, go find a police station, or sheriffs, or wherever, a lighted area. Will people know that it's a police car in the dark?
Yes, absolutely, and thank you for bringing that up because we had that discussion with everything that's happening around ICE and the concerns that are being had there about masked individuals in plain cars. This is certainly not one of those. This is a fully marked police car with 360 lights, and it will be a uniformed officer getting out without a face mask. So in so much as we are able to let that person know we're doing all of that. The only thing that would be different if you were stopped is that this vehicle won't have the Rhino bar on the front. It won't have the big push bumper on the front of it. But that will be the only difference. The lights will still be there in the grill, and of course, in the windshield.
All right. Thank you.
Does this take away from current policing? So if we're not making any budget changes, so we're maintaining our current staffing, and our current police officers are responding to calls that are not traffic-related calls, are we, what are we doing less of to implement this?
No, we're not doing less of anything. Where the amendments will come from. So we have been, every hire that we've had, we've been sponsoring through the academy over the last several years. And the grant that the state has offered has covered much of that for us. Now, there was a time in our turnover last year where we had so many retirements, and we were sending so many people through that we had budgeted such, where we expected to be sponsoring quite a few people, and at that time, the grant had run out. So there's been different periods where it's announced that the grant's available, it's not available. So we didn't know what to expect, so we planned for that contingency. And when the fiscal year changed, we rolled over that excess expecting those bills to come due. Well, what happened instead was the state refunded the grant and covered those bills for us. So then we have that funding available in there. The other thing, and I didn't bring this up, but this is a whole other can of worms here, but we are coming up on the expiration of our contract with Axon, which is our tasers and our body cameras. So that's got a big price tag associated with it too. That expires in the summer of '27. So I've started talking to that company about renewals. So we have this funding available in the budget and trying to think of how best to apply that. So my conversations with the finance director, with the administrator, is trying to find what we're best served by doing with that. So the reason for going with a lease is several, but also it's not taking that big bite up front. If we decide that this isn't something that's working for us, we can send it back. But in the interim, it's what we're gonna try to do to combat what's happening.
Real quick, Chief, thank you for bringing this to the table. As I've seen leasing start to really take over the industry, so I'm glad you're gonna take this more measured approach. I think that's real good for the City of Adrian, number one. Number two, this unit will not have a zero-tolerance approach, correct? Are you gonna, they're still gonna be able to exercise discretion on their traffic staff?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, no, we're not. It's just another mode of transportation to do the same thing, but we're not laying down any type of rules. The goal is to change the behavior, so we're not intending on writing every person everything we can possibly find. We hope that we can get the message out.
Thank you for that because sometimes the public thinks when you put a traffic unit in place, it's zero tolerance, and it's a great way to effect change, especially as the educators here speak to the point of our elementary schools and whatnot. Also, I think the third point would be engagement. You're probably gonna use these for different engagement opportunities.
Yeah, that is true too. Yeah, we will probably use it for parades, to lead parades. We'll use it for the touch-a-truck events. We'll use it for the trunk-or-treats and anything downtown where we need a presence. Yeah.
Thank you. Well done.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Very informative. Appreciate it.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, are there any other items that you would wish to discuss?
I'd like to talk about maybe scheduling a future meeting, a public hearing for the Crimson Funds. So that has been years down the road now. And since we were part of the bankruptcy settlement with that, and we do have that $100,000 back in place, if there's a possibility. I did talk with Ben Negron, and he did mention that the Align Center would be a good location on the east side if we wanted to host it there. I know our last meeting, when we had it at the fairgrounds, there were a little bit of sound and noise issues with the H-trac system there. So the Align Center may be a little bit better for that conversation and audiovisual. I don't know.
Do we have the additional $50,000? Did that come through yet? Because the last I spoke with Burke, probably three weeks ago, that has not happened.
Yeah, last I heard that, I haven't heard that it came through the bankruptcy court, but it's slated as part of the settlement. And my thought would be that we know it's coming as part of that bankruptcy settlement, that we start discussing this rather than waiting months and months and months, especially if we're looking at anything that would involve construction or allowing people to do construction on their home or fix-up. Now would be the time to do that over the winter to kind of identify that process. So spring projects could take place. And again, that's all dependent on how the public guides us and how we act on that as well.
And let's be sure that we're gonna focus on the people that were affected, that this is not a citywide thing. The money was given, and our first meeting, in the public meeting, we decided we would spend that money with the people who were affected in that neighborhood, that we weren't gonna put something else in the city somewhere else, that it's gonna be targeted for that specific area.
That's part of the judgment it's required to be. Yeah.
I just want to make sure that people know, because there's all kinds of rumors, because I read it on the internet, you know, that it's gonna do this. So it is targeted for the people and the individuals' families living in that area, and homeowners specifically.
I don't think it says homeowners. I think we were kind of talking about homeowners. But I think that if there's another option for someone who was renting, an individual that was renting and living there, subject to that, not necessarily the owner of the rental property. not necessarily the owner of the rental property.
Well, my opinion on that is a homeowner is an individual having a property. A renter is a business, and that's the cost of being a business, to maintain your property in an effective way.
Right.
So I don't want a renter, a rental home, getting this money that's subsidized for the people that live there. I want it to be the homeowners that have been there, that meet the criteria, which we set forth, so that they can have that opportunity and improve or do whatever they feel the need is in that area.
And when I mean renter, I mean the individual that's renting the room and living in that location, not the person that's owning the property. So they were also subjected to that as a person living there, unfortunate as a result of that. So I don't know if we want.
Just so you know, Chad, since you're newer to us, there was like an area that was, are you aware of that? I was just making sure that Chad knew this, that there was, there was an exact area that then we sent mailers out, you know, let that area know by mailing that this was going to happen for that first town hall that we did do. So that is already set.
Thank you. Would we want to pick a date or allow administration to work with the Align Center on a date and time, and then get back with us as to when mailings can take place and all that other good stuff?
Do you know how much the Align Center is going to charge?
I think we can allow our city administrator maybe work some magic for that.
Yeah, I think the fairgrounds is, I'm sorry. I think the fairground was like $500 plus setup or take-down fees, too.
Yeah, I think they were hopeful that there would be less than that.
I do know they have a nonprofit rate, which does not apply to us, but they do have a rate for that for like two hours. That is much less than that $500. I already know that for looking into that, but I don't know what it would be for us. But just to let you know on that.
I'll try to work me.
Yeah. I mean, because you also have the Father Komarowski Hall at St. Mary's. That would be a place that if, I mean, just looking at expenses for the city where it's handicapped accessible. I agree that the Align Center is just a tremendous place. It really is. If you haven't had the opportunity to go there, go there. But I think you, you know, the Align Center, then you have St. Mary's over there, you know, and the old Boys and Girls Club might, you know, in their cafeteria, might be able to do something with us there.
True. And we also have Piotr Center, so it might be, we could use the gym area.
Anything else? All right, moving on to our consent agenda. May I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
We have a motion from Commissioner Roberts with a second from Commissioner Miller. Roll call, please.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Yes.
Commissioner Banky.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Moving on to our regular agenda. We have Resolution R-25-056 from Community Development. It is a resolution in support of Collier Gibson's application to the Mishta Michigan Neighborhood 3.0 Program for the redevelopment of the former Bixby Hospital site. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Support.
Are there any commissioner comments or discussion on this?
Do we know, would this speed up the timeline for construction for them at this point? Because it seems like things have been stalled over there.
I really don't think this would speed up anything, to be honest with you. I think this is just a step in the process to generate more funding.
Okay.
We have a motion from Commissioner Roberts with a second from Commissioner Schwartz. Correct? You were the second, right?
Yes.
Sure.
Making sure. Okay. I didn't look down, sorry. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Banky.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Resolution R-25-057 is from FIRE. It is a resolution to authorize the city administrator to enter into a contract to purchase a new Braun ambulance from the Sourcewell, Michigan dealer McQueen Equipment. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Support.
Are there any commissioner comments or questions or discussion?
Having the opportunity to ride in many ambulances in the last six months, let's make sure the suspension is good on it.
My understanding is this is not in our current budget. It's supposed to be budgeted for when we receive it in two years, correct?
That's correct. We do have the fire chief online, but for everyone's knowledge, these are taking at least two years to build. This, at the onset of the contract, will not cost us any money. And in the meantime, I would expect the audience to have a discussion topic, including commission to talk about not only the return on investment of having our own ambulance service, but understand the success rate and the improved service of having that ambulance service in our community.
That is correct, but I'm sure our chief will do this, but we just need to make sure that we start budgeting for this for when we receive it, because it's a lot of money. It's a lot of money. If you haven't read it, it's like $340,000, I believe, if I remember correctly. So we need to, we need to have that set in our budget before we take ownership of it.
Eric, can you respond to any of this?
Yeah, so the, I'm getting an echo. I don't know if it's me or you.
You sound good here.
Okay. The, I guess, first, the suspension, actually, we do have a hydraulic suspension that we put in ours to last longer and ride smoother than some of the other ones. So just to cover that. And the, so the, this ambulance was approved in the budget, actually, a down payment was approved in this year's capital budget for it to be an expense in the future. So $40,000 was approved this year to put down as the down payment. But they actually, a new company bought out the company who we buy them from, and they don't require a down payment. So that's, the $40,000 is in the budget this year. But of course, we're not. From what I was told, and we did the same thing with the one that we're supposed to receive in March of this year, is to put a, basically a, I can't remember exactly the terms, because I've got my head, but it's a designator in the fund balance for the balance of it when it actually arrives. So the request was put in for this year to purchase it, that to go in this budget year for the down payment. And then in the future, then it'll be in the budget to actually pay for it when the ambulance arrives.
Okay, thank you.
Eric, for this meeting, I think it'd be important to speak to, if you can, the upfitting and how you can use some of the upfitting for future vehicles. Is the way it's constructed.
Yep, so the intent is going to be to do what's called a remount or re-chassis in the future. So this will be the last, I'll say, full ambulance we buy for probably quite a while, because the expense and buying an ambulance in a box that has the, that's made completely out of aluminum will allow us to take that box and put it onto a new chassis and save the cost of buying a completely new ambulance, because we're not buying new aluminum, new metal. That is, there's nothing, for say, wrong with the metal. So our intent is to now, once this ambulance is purchased, we'll get rid of and sell the oldest one. And that one, the box, actually, the outside's made of aluminum, but all the shelving and everything inside is made out of particle board, which doesn't, of course, last as long bouncing down the road as the aluminum, when it's all the shelving and everything's made out of aluminum. We can just pick that box up, put it on a new chassis, and basically, it's a new ambulance. But there's significant savings. So we're going to, what we're looking at is not putting a, either one, put a new chassis under it, or if the chassis is not rusted, like, we put a lot of miles on them, just transporting patients. And if the chassis is still in good shape, that's when we're going to look at possibly just putting a new motor or a new transmission, where we're not throwing away good metal. redoing all the things and doing a, an outfit of the actual truck itself to keep them on the road and significant savings. So that's where this one's actually the last one to where we can start re-chassis-ing or putting new equipment and that sort of thing in them.
So are you saying that the three that we will have after this one, they all are set up that way? Is that what I'm understanding? I'm just clarifying.
Correct. So we have two right now that are Braun ambulances. Those two are set to where we can re-chassis them, the boxes. In March of next year, we're scheduled to have delivery of another one. So that'll give us our third Braun. And then this one, two to three years down the road, would be the last one that we would have, that we could just start re-chassis-ing them, or, like I said, basically giving them just what they need instead of, instead of buying a new box for the back.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion? We have a motion from Commissioner Gauss with a second from Commissioner Miller. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Yes.
Commissioner Banky.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Resolution R-25-058 is from the city clerk. It is a resolution to approve an election agreement of lease and authorize the city clerk to execute the agreement. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Support.
Are there any commissioner comments or discussion on this? We have a motion from Commissioner Roberts with a second from Commissioner Miller. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Yes.
Commissioner Banky.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Resolution R-25-059 is from Community Development. It is a resolution to approve electrical upgrades in preparation for the town square project. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Support.
Are there any commissioner comments or discussion on this resolution? I have a motion from Commissioner Roberts with a second from Commissioner Miller. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yeah.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Yes.
Commissioner Banky.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Resolution R-25-060 is from Administration. It is a resolution to engage the firm Schiffman-Forener for specialized legal services. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved. Support.
Are there any commissioner comments or discussion on this one? We have a motion from Commissioner Gauss with a second from Commissioner Schwartz. Roll call, please.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Yes.
Commissioner Banky.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Resolution R-25-061 is from Administration. It is a resolution to engage the firm of UHY Advisors Michigan Incorporated for investigative services specific to the enhancement grant. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Support.
Are there any commissioner comments or discussion on this one?
Could we just get kind of the layman's overview of this for the public so that they could have an understanding of what services we're engaging?
Certainly, certainly. This engagement with a firm out of Farmington is a third-party engagement to bring in a forensic accountant to support and bring, and strengthen audit controls as it relates to the enhancement grant. This is a considerable grant that's coming to our city's $15 million. This third party will help us understand the money, how the money is being spent, how it's been spent to date, and to give clear transparency to not only this commission, but the citizens, where the money is at, and as the subcommittee meets and puts forth a plan to spend the rest of the dollars. So I expect to have some better understanding by November 17th or December 1st at this commission meeting to set forth a plan as we carry on in the future.
So just to be clear, it's not because we feel like there's anything nefarious or unethical or illegal going on. It's just we kind of lost track of our dotting our i's and crossing our t's. And so we're doing our due diligence to make sure we know exactly where the money is.
Certainly. It's my experience, when you have this large amount of money, you need support the employees or putting forth visions and ideas and getting those passed with this commission. There needs to be a party that helps manage that money. That's not only going to be checked by the state, there are all our controls afterwards when there's an audit for the city and our names attached to it. So having that audit at this point would very much support that effort.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Sorry about my voice tonight. Thank you very much, City Administrator, for your diligence in this and your foresight. We have a motion from Commissioner Schwartz with a second from Commissioner Banky. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Yes.
Commissioner Banky.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Commissioners, do you have miscellaneous reports in your packet? Are there any questions or comments on those? All right, at this time, we will have public comment. This is general public comment. It does not have to pertain to anything that was on the agenda tonight. We will begin inside the city chambers first. And just to reiterate, there's a three-minute time limit. You will see it on the screen. And for our records, please state your name and place of residence. When we have exhausted all of our comment inside the chambers, we will then open it up to the Zoom participants. We will begin now. Just approach the microphone if you wish to speak. Thank you.
Gail Dunaway, Adrian, Michigan. My comment does refer to the traffic enforcement. I think we need to consider other types of transportation, not just our four-wheeled vehicles. These teeny-weeny little, I don't know what they are. But they're low-profile, make a lot of noise and whatnot. Not that they're going to injure somebody else, but they're possibly a danger to themselves. I have friends, well, I used to be a long-distance cyclist. I have friends who got busted by Wisconsin cops. They were on a tandem, but they blew a couple of stop signs. The guy gave them like a pass the first two, but he busted them on the third. So a bicycle is considered a vehicle. It may not have a motor, but they are responsible for all traffic laws, signals, some of the hand signals. And even our wheelchair population, our motorized wheelchair population, a lot of them pop out of nowhere. I have, I worked in a group home before I officially retired, and this gal she no longer is in the group home. But man, she just will tool down the sidewalk like nobody's business, and just hi. But whether, I think we need to be a little bit more mindful about other transportation methods. And, you know, just stop and say, you know, give them a little warning, and then it took it.
Hi, Judith Hammerly, Adrian, Michigan. I just had a question, both about what's happening with the Bixby property. I saw it was on the agenda, but I don't know if you're going to give us an update. And then. And then someone just asked me what's happening with the mall property, too. So I don't know if this is the right forum, but it'd be nice to get an update in some form. Thank you.
Chief Mueller, City of Adrian. I was looking at all the bills we paid this week, or this month. And I don't understand why we paid Dempsey's two hundred and forty dollars, the Buzz Cafe a hundred and five, Musgrave Company a hundred and forty-five, and then somebody had to have lunch at Dragon Asian for fifteen dollars. It's our city taxpayer money shouldn't go to buy anybody lunch. I don't care an employee. If you can't afford your own lunch, then pack a lunch. But we shouldn't be paying our tax money for people to buy lunch. I don't understand it. Another thing is, with the accidents in town, I bet if you find out, the majority of the people that are bad drivers are the drivers that never did driver's education. Most of them wait till they're eighteen, go down to Secretary of State and get their driver's license. They take their test. They don't know how to drag to begin with. And that's where all the accidents are coming in. I would, I would assume at least eighty percent. And that's probably our fault, because as a, a community, we should have driver's education at the schools. But we don't. The kids got to pay three hundred dollars for it, and they can't afford it. Or four hundred bucks. As a community, you guys like to spend money. Why don't you put out a course for driver's education? And make the city pay for it? I mean, we have wasted so many thousands and thousands and hundreds of thousands of dollars in the last two years. We could pay for driver's education for everybody. Worried about three hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars for an ambulance, but we poured out of a bucket of water, you know, two million dollars on the, the last bunch of money that we spent. The Winter Street Project, the Adrian Inn, Bone Pool. You get, we spend more money than we make. What else was I wanting to, oh. I'd like to thank, this weekend, there was a fine protest that went on. Very nice. I'd like to thank all the people that were at that protest for their hard work, diligence, and persistence, because we do not have a king. I am so glad that that happened. So y'all have a blessed day.
Hearing no more public comment. Inside the chambers, we will now open it up to the Zoom participants. Just to remind you, to please also state your name and place of residence, and you should see your time on the screen as well. Hearing no public comment, we will move on to Commissioner comments. I want to start out by recognizing our police chief, Vince Emmerich, who received an award last night at the NAACP Freedom Fund Banquet for Police Officer of the Years. We can all recognize our amazing police, police chief. He hates attention, so I did not warn him. And now he's mad at me, I can tell. He does not like any extra attention. But thank you for all you do for us, Vince, in keeping everyone safe. And just, it's very exciting that we have a full police force again and just all of the hard work that you've put into that. It does not go unnoticed. And then I would like our city administrator to address the question about both Bixby and the mall. I don't know what is really public or can be said publicly yet, but the mall has got some very exciting things heading your way very soon. But I will let our city administrator talk to you.
To the mayor's point, she just stole my thunder. There's not much I, there's not much I can say, because we want to be fair to the developers. But I can tell you, the community development, I know the mayor actually herself has had a few conversations as it relates to the mall. As you saw with the, the motion tonight that was approved, we're trying to move along the Bixby property, and that will continue. I know our community development director is working hard on that. We'll be excited to close the loop on the Adrian Mall. I'd like to thank the mayor and our director of community development as they push this through. And hopefully, we'll have something to report here in the next few months. So from my perspective, in my first month, I, I might have came at the right time, because I know we've been suffering with that Adrian Mall, the way it sits right now. And it'd be nice to come in office and see that resolve soon for our citizens. So thank you. Don't want to overpromise them.
Mistress, any comments? Anything tonight? Go ahead.
Uh, in relation to traffic and speed enforcement, I, the man is sitting here that has always had me hit the brakes in Clinton. And Officer Trevino, I thank you for that late-night conversation to slow down and to go the speed limit in Clinton. I don't think since that night I have been above that. So hopefully, that will continue in Adrian soon, just like it does in Clinton and Blissfield for me religiously. And then lastly, just want to announce again that our students from Moriyama will be arriving on Friday. They'll be spending the weekend with their host families. Throughout Lenawee, there's two students that live here in Adrian. And then they're very excited about participating in the Halloween trick-or-treating downtown during, during their time here. The final presentation and cultural presentation that the students from Moriyama give to our community is taking place at Wednesday next week at five o'clock, and everyone is invited to that. It will be about thirty-five minutes. A great insight into the Japanese culture and education system, followed by some really great Sunnyside tacos to send them off Thursday morning back to Japan.
I have a few announcements. Attended the MDOT update this morning. And if you are still having questions or concern about the intersection of front and broad, please know that they are listening. They have made some changes to when it was first recreated. They've done some more striping and added some more pillar things, I guess you'd call them, to make that curve more visible. So if, please keep contacting MDOT, or you can contact the city if you have any other suggestions for making that corner safer. Another thing, I was at a Michigan Municipal League Committee this morning. We discussed the budget update. And luckily, or however you want to see it, we are going to be receiving increased funding from the state to, to our city street budget. So that will be nice. We will be able to do a few more streets in the next year. We also are going to be receiving additional funds for policing, community policing. I don't recall exactly what that funding will be for. And maybe our chief will get word on that or already knows. But hopefully, that funding will be coming through in February, is my understanding. Unfortunately, though, our community revenue sharing for our city is going to be going down. So it's going to be an offset. The other thing that's happening is that there will be, is less funding for state police to be on the roads. And so I believe our chief alluded to that. But there, you will see less state police on the roads. And so if there are more, if there are things that the state police would have responded to, they're going to be now asking townships and county sheriffs, and I'm not sure if that would include our city police, to respond to things that used to be responded to by the state. So with our state budget, there will be some impact to our budget, good and bad. The Community Academy has opened its registration portal. It's taking place, the registration will be open until December twelfth. If we do not have twenty-five registrants by that time, Michelle Dew and I discussed, because it is over Thanksgiving holiday and it's Christmas time, we will keep it open for longer until we reach our twenty-five max. It will run on Thursdays from January eighth through March twelfth, most of the time here in this building, from six to seven-thirty. We, I see we have several community graduate, Community Academy graduates in the audience. So it's nice to see that, that they are still supporting the city. As Ms. Commissioner Banky stated, we have trick-or-treating downtown this Saturday, the twenty-fifth, from four-thirty to six-thirty. I will be downtown helping with the painting of pumpkins. But it's my understanding from Michelle that we still could use some more volunteers. So if anyone is interested in volunteering, you can get me your contact information. All I'm going to do is send it to Michelle. So if you want to talk to Michelle afterwards. But we are looking for a few more volunteers. If you haven't attended this event, there are thousands of children and families that come down and trick-or-treat on the streets on Saturday. And it looks going to be, looks to be a cool, cool as in temperature, but also cool event. So, you know, come down, volunteer if you can. Another exciting thing that happened with the state budget is, if you haven't heard, Sam Buford Woodworking Institute has received a twelve-million-dollar grant from the state to start building their project. I believe our lawyer is continuing to work on our agreement for the sale of the property to them, to Luke. So that's very exciting to hopefully get this project off the ground with some funding from the state. And lastly, I understand that there was a, a rhino drug raid that happened in downtown Adrian. Adrian Police Department got some really good play, some really good notification from the state police and other agencies. So thank you once again, Chief, for all the work that you and your department does.
Thank you for putting up with my voice. If you had heard me Wednesday, and a couple commissioners here can attest, I had a whisper at most. I could barely talk at all. So I know, Terry, I was, felt like I was you. I, I, it was so hard to talk. I, I felt for you. But, so anyways, thank you for putting up with that tonight. Hopefully, I'll be back normal next time. May I get a motion to adjourn?
Support.
All in favors, say aye.
Aye.